Let's move on. Unless I'm missing anybody, you know? Okay, let's move on. Paulam, you got another one here?
Yes. The next question that I have is for Matt and Wahid. As Mountain House continues to grow towards built-out, how important is it in your view to establish some regular public transportation? To what degree should the city subsidize those efforts? And how might a public transportation program be implemented? And let's start with Matt.
So I don't feel there's a need for constant hyper-local transportation within town, given the size of our town and the walkability score and the cyclability score, if that's a word. However, we do need, up until ValleyLink arrives, we do need something that can get commuters to and from here to Ace to Bart. And also, more importantly, I think that within Mountain House, we need to designate a rideshare lot, whether that be at the ValleyLink site before ValleyLink comes or somewhere in town near the freeway. We don't have control of occupying Grantline Road at 205. So the only thing we could suggest or implement would be at Mountain House Parkway and the 205. But not only could Mountain House residents utilize that, granted, it's going to cost the collective carpoolers an additional 20 minutes to get from Mountain House Parkway to Grantline Road on a bad day. But they could also at least park there and then join the rest of the party on Grantline Road between Mountain House Parkway down to the freeway and or through the Altamont Pass if they needed to detour due to an accident. So I think more importantly than public transportation, we need to encourage carpooling and facilitate that, whether it be a small or a mid-sized lot in the plot that is eventually planned for ValleyLink, where we're going to have to develop roadways and things like that from Mountain House Parkway, in addition to shuttle buses that take people to these major transportation options for rail. Thank you.
Mr. Wahid?
Yep, so as we talked about the ValleyLink rail, which is a long-term solution to address the problem. But at the same time, the short-term plan, besides entirely focusing on the transportation, and I said in my opening statement minimizing the pain points for our commuters. So at this point in time, as Matt said, that there is not enough ways for our traffic to go out to the 205. I think we have only one, two, Mountain House and then the Grantline. The third one is something that we can find a solution for to work and that can bring an ease to our commuters and alleviate the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. An added comment to that is that when ValleyLink comes, it's going to bring in the park-and-ride area. That's going to bring a lot of people here. That, keep in mind that the Delta College, one day will be brick-and-mortar. That is a wonderful school. With ValleyLink in tow, people will be coming from all directions. They'll be coming over the Altamont and coming out here. So that's the transportation link that's needed. But until that time happens, ValleyLink will get the first train in 2028. Until that time, we still need to transport people from the core of our city to Bart and to other places for them to get to work on time because that freeway and the traffic is just horrendous and we need to move people. We need people movers. So one of the first things is come up with a viable transportation link, and I'm finished. I'm building up credit.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison, you have one minute.
Yeah, I think we need to bring the RDT back. The, I didn't know that we, we lost that. But, because that was good when we have it. And I've seen it used all over. It's well-used in Tracy. And I think it'll benefit Mountain House with whoever on the board. We go ahead and bring them back into Mountain House. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Suresh?
Yeah, I have a comment. I have a comment on this, yeah. We really need the transportation. So since we're becoming a city, so we have a negotiation power or more power in the county. So we are going to negotiate right after the city with the county transportation. And then even though if it requires some portion of our tax money, we should put in, we really need the transportation. Because it's going to be, improve our citizens' convenience for traffic as well. Thank you.
As suggested, the next question will be for Suresh and for Vice President Tingle as well. The Mountain House CSD Board recently established a community-based Parks and Rec Commission consisting of residents working with the Recreation Manager. There was some drama in the establishment of that committee. Vice President Tingle was President Tingle at the time. Suresh, as a new city council member, I have a question for you, Suresh. As a new city council member, how would you propose to handle appointment of citizen commissions in the new city of Mountain House to be a smoother and more harmonious process? And secondly, Vice President Tingle, you are the board president and in charge of appointing the members of the Citizen-Driven Parks and Rec Commission. In a, if in a similar situation as part of the new city of Mountain House, what lessons could you, or learn that you might use to change your approach? Or would you? We'll start with Suresh.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, without question, also I have this concern. So basically, not only Recreation Commission, so any Citizens Committee should be very effective and should be like an actionable or, you know, accountable kind of thing. Of course, we cannot force because they are volunteers. But still, there should be some accountability. There should be like some project plan or, you know, you give a problem or they bring up, you know, from the community, a problem. And then, you know, put a solution and what's the execution plan? And what are the results for it? So I want these committees, even though those are volunteer committees, I want these committees also needs to be accountable. And I want to see the solutions from these committees. So these committees shouldn't be a political committees to give a credit of tag to them that I am in this committee. We shouldn't. And then at the same time, the recruiting shouldn't be happen from the board member, I mean, city council or from the mayor, whoever it is. The recruiting of citizens committees or Recreation Commissions or any commissions, we should from the staff, expertise staff, you know, I mean, whoever expertise. Even though if you want to recruit the citizen, I mean, recruiting citizens committees, also we can establish a board from the citizens. So it should be out of the political, should be completely under the staff. I am telling you on the vote here that it should be. I am going to support the staff recruited committees and Recreation Commissions.
Thank you.
Okay. On the creation of the Recreation Commission, there was some initial drama. But to, I think my question is that how would I have done that differently? Or how would the council should do that differently in the future? Or, well, I'm going to tell you the way that it was done. And unless anyone else would want to change that, I'll tell you how it was done. I think it was done fair and equitable. Equitable. The applicants you look at, each applicant blocked their name off. But before that, come up with a criterion of what the assignment entails. And look, as you're looking over the application, do these people make the trigger point? That's the way it was done. That stops any bias, any prejudice, any anything because it's all in us. So I like to keep myself straight. I blocked off, we did a list of criterion. What does this assignment entail? What are the trigger points, the qualities that we would need the individual to have? Then you just tick them off. And that's how, that's how it was picked. On, certain trigger points were set and you picked it on what the person had to offer. And then I looked and said, okay, this is this person, that person, you go down the line. I think that's fair and equitable. If someone else has another suggestion going forth, you know, change is a wonderful thing. If you think it should be another, done another way, then fine. If it's going to be fair, other than picking your best friend, okay?
I would like, I would like to respond to that, yes. I think the process of how the Recreation Commission was chosen was a great process. And I think the people that they have on the board working to bring more recreation programs to the community of Mountain House is doing an excellent job. We, because I'm on the Recreation Commission, I was voted unanimously to be on there. I just wanted to say that. But I think we're working very well together. And we are going to bring some great programs to the people of Mountain House.
Can I cut it to something?
No.
So unfortunately, I was part of that drama. I'll leave it at that. Shots fired. No, just kidding. Suresh and I shook hands and spoke today and several times this week. Back to the matter at hand. Commissions are based on residents, not candidacy. So for those who do want to serve within their committee for their community, regardless of eligibility to run for public office, this would be the perfect opportunity for the community to vote if the CSD or the city of Mountain House were to send out specific QR codes to every address in Mountain House and let the people decide. And that single identified QR code doesn't have to be tied to everyone's addresses, as long as every single one is unique. One vote per house can collectively decide on who they want on these commissions. That is the future that I see.
All right. This, the next question, it's actually really two questions. It's for Sadia Khan and Ms. Tingle. But they are kind of separate, but on same theme, sort of. For Sadia Khan, your campaign platform, among other things, emphasizes stronger youth relations in our community. What specific ways you see that you can accomplish that if you are a council member?
That's my, that's it?
That's for you, yeah.
Okay, so my vision is to get the youth involved in neighborhood safety programs. When fresh minds take over, we all can see new beginnings of safe living. So I think that just like the neighborhood program is there, I would get the youth involved instead of taking their pictures and posting in social media when they make pranks. If we get them and make them in charge, I think it will be a big difference in how they basically be in the town or how they conduct themselves in our town. City, I should say. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and for, yes, your turn. And the question-
You want to restate my question is the same one?
I don't think he finished his question.
Your question is next. It's the same theme, but slightly different. And so, Ms. Tingle, you have had a long tenure of chairing the Youth Action Committee in our town. And you have made a difference for people.
Hundred and fifty, yes. I'm a numbers person, okay?
Can you share some of your successes and maybe challenges you have faced during this time?
I would love to, and I have two minutes. Okay, first of all, the Youth Action Committee, it's been around since 2009. We started with a mission statement. And every young person that's come within that adheres to the mission statement. It's important to know what your responsibilities are so you can stay in your right lane. One of the things that is part of the mission is that developing leadership skills. I, you could probably tell that the youth are my passion. In fact, I got to be out of here because I'm going to meet with them at 7:15. You got that? So, one of the things is that it's involvement, getting them involved. And we mirror how the board looks. They have an agenda, they follow it. If they're making a presentation, they do slides. We have a summer camp. And each year, the kids come up with what they, who they want to see. We always have fire and safety. We have entrepreneurial, we have careers. We have things that they are interested in and they go out and get people. Last year, it was, there was things on finance, you know? And that's important, that the kids know how to save. It's not what you make, it's what you do with what you make. So there's a lot of things that this group has done to not only empower themselves, but to make them better people. And what I really enjoy is that the Youth Action Committee has made a difference, not only the commitment, not only to the community that they're helping, but they're helping themselves and they're helping one another because we emphasize teamwork. There's no I in that. They all work together as a team. When one succeeds, they all succeed. They present to the board each week, I mean, each month. And we rotate that. So they're developing leadership skills. And it's something real that they could put on a college application rather than how many hours that they spent volunteering. They could say real productive thing that they've done to make them better citizens and better people. And yes, I'm really fired about the Youth Action Committee and I would prefer to stay working with them. Thank you, bye.
We could go on, but we're nearing our end time. And I think it's better if we just end on time, especially since you have to be with the kids at 7:15. You guys have been wonderfully spirited. I think it's really great. And there's a harmony in the discord that occasionally shows up. But I think it's healthy for all of us, so. I would like to suggest, I don't know if we have a method to do this, but how about if we go for closing statements, we go the other way? We'll start with Mr. Mur and we'll work that way. And let's just do it in one minute.
Sure. I want to address to my community. Our Mountain House is at a pivotal moment and it deserves compassionate leadership. So we definitely need compassionate leadership. And the Mountain House that my family moved 13 years ago, it has grown and developed so much. And I'm very excited to see what future holds for us and as we continue to do so. What I bring to the table is fresh perspective. And as we approach towards this crucial decision we're going to make on Major D, I want to tell my voters to be cognizant about that they are very much informative about this. They take informed decision on this, Major D. That remember that your vote is more than a mark on the ballot. And as we progress, that we will be able to create creative changes, positive changes in our community. And I'm honored to be part of, on this journey with you, with every one of you. I look forward to having your support and vote for me so that I become your voice in the hall. Thank you.
Your city, your council, our future. Thanks to Brian, the team members, the candidates who are sitting over here. Thank you for putting up with me. This is a historical moment. We are hopefully going to embark on getting our cityhood going soon. Just reiterating my campaign commitments, ethical and transparent leadership, safety and security for the community, zoning commitments, network building so we can work with the cities and the counties. I assure you that I'm bringing the right set of skills and abilities, both from the military and the civilian perspective. Please keep on asking questions because I don't know everything. But I'm willing to spend time to get the right answer for you. I encourage you guys, whatever time I have, to come knock on your doors. Open your doors! Talk to me, all right? This is our city. Be community members. Work with us. I'll assure you, things will happen for us. We'll have a safe and a healthy community. Us all. I'll run out.
Okay. What's crucial for a smooth transition to, from a special district to an incorporated city? If that's the direction that we're going, I will definitely support that. I said I am a team player. Whatever the community wants is what I want to work for. But that happens if we could retain a few of the existing board members who have some history on where we've been to help direct where we're going to go. One of the things that's important too is to find out what the community really wants. And that's paramount to me. When people show up to board meetings is when I get excited because now I have a pulse on what you want. I have been known to change my vote when I get input from what you want. It's not about me, it's about you. But it's also about me because I pay taxes here too. But you're first. But I ask for your continued support and vote of confidence. And I'd be honored to continue to serve this community, our community, my community. What I do bring, Tingle, I like little, okay. Tingle stands for Elect Tingle. Trust for T, integrity, neighbor, governance, leadership and experience. That's Bernie's Tingle.
Okay, as I've said before with my platform, my number one priority is going to be public safety. And I am going to be doing a deep dive into our police department and fire. You know, I look at our population, Mountain House, 30,000 population. We have eight deputies. Lathrop, 35,000, one chief, two commanders that run operations and support, six sergeants and 31 police officers. We could do better in Mountain House, okay? And that's not to say I like our sheriff and San Joaquin should be happy to have him. But in order for us, you know, I hear this, oh, you know, we got low crime. Well, to keep it low crime, you got to be proactive, not reactive. So we can't wait and then, oh, wow, now our crime's going up. So now we got to get ahead of the game. Okay? And then, just my past accomplishments, that when I was on the board, I was one that spearheaded the initiative for our security cameras. And now look at what we got. We got 70-plus cameras. And then some of them, 10 seconds. Returned all of our deputies in 16 days when the sheriff went ahead and took them from us. I assisted with bringing ranked security in. And I kept our special taxes to 2%. So I please ask you for your vote on March 5th. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you very much being in, participating in this debate. The community of Mountain House during the 2022 elections has noticed the service I provided and their support has been greatly appreciated. I have, haven't, adore their trust in me. My key focus areas are public safety, transportation, education, economic development, sports and recreation. So choosing a candidate with a profile deeply rooted in community services before even filing candidacy papers sends a powerful message. It indicates a shared commitment to prioritizing welfare of our residents and fostering the thriving community. I ask for your support, not just as a first choice, but as someone who has consistently demonstrated a passion for public service and a genuine commitment to addressing the needs of our community. Together, let's set a landmark by selecting leaders who are devoted to the well-being and progress of our newly incorporating city. Your vote for me will guarantee a member in this council who has always had been Mountain House as its top priority. I promise to contribute to the positive momentum we aim to build for our betterment of our community. Thank you for your trust and consideration.
Trust and integrity is very, very important to me. And I need you to know that you can trust me with decisions going forward, whether we vote to become a city now or we do it later. Because I'm going to do, as they say, what the people want. It's for the people, by the people. We have a responsibility to take care of our community. If you want something done, you call and ask me. I'm going to get it done. If you need somebody to support you, I will support you. If you just need somebody to hold your hand and walk with you down the street because you're scared, I'm into public safety too. I will get in there with you. I'll be by your side. I'll fight for our community. I'll fight for our rights. And I'll just fight.
As a candidate for city council, I recognize the responsibility that comes with this role. And I'm ready to work tirelessly to represent the interest of every one of you. I actually run a food program that's called Share a Meal Mountain House that I started a couple of years ago. And together, we saved $1,800 a year per household in Mountain House so far in food waste. So I'm very proud of that project that I started. And other than that, we have a lot of little projects going on. And I'm really hopeful that we can make a difference together. I have a fun fact about me, quickly. I am actually a Canadian and I became an American citizen just last August, right after my birthday. And the first chance I got to serve the American, you know, serve our country, I went for it. So that's why I'm running for city council. This is just a start. Thank you.
So within six months of settling down in Mountain House, I dove headfirst into getting involved in the community and enhancing the social experience and how we connect in Mountain House by bridging our social gaps, or at least tackling that, to celebrate our diversity rather than separate it. I'm not going to print a single campaign sign. I'm not going to put a door hanger on your door. Hopefully, my proven testimony of commitment and how I act throughout the year and not just the three months before an election speaks its volume. If you know me, you know what I've done. If you know what I'm about, you know who I am. If you don't, feel free to reach out and I'll be happy to make time for you so that we can get to know each other and I can build a trust with you. Or you can make a judgment on who you think I am. I'm going to leave it at that and close with, it's my proven, excuse me, it's the proven demonstrated testimony for my commitment to the people of Mountain House that will transcend into my future actions as a council member. Thank you.
And we have a word from our host here, Umar Seer.
There was a comment about the schools being in the center of the towns. That's one of the reasons why we are actually such a close-knit community. So I would not want to change that. Because we all converge, regardless of what background we have, we converge with our kids and it creates that social atmosphere. So one of the unique things of Mountain House is that we have schools in the center of the villages. So I really feel very passionate about that. I wouldn't want that changing. So I'm kind of putting that in front of all of you as well. The second thing, you know, about the district, voting by district and all of that stuff, believe me, I feel very passionate about that as well, I think. And just my feedback, that we want to keep it at large because it's, we don't want to divide the community up in any shape or form. Anything that even hints at doing that, we should keep away from that. So those are two things that I wanted to share. I'm too passionate about it. I didn't want to let it pass. So thank you so much. So yeah, for some of you who know, I did run last time around. I want to say there's more ways to serve the community just as, from just being in office. For whomever is running, continue to look for opportunities to serve the community. Being in a position is good because you can have influence. But there is influence to be had from the outside. If you're passionate about something, continue to do it. Don't just do it, you know, for the position or the face of it. And I know there's many people right in front of me who've committed and actually served this community, regardless of what position is on offer, whether they are in or out of it. So I think that's the important thing. Being in a position is not the important thing. If you can, if you feel that it's important, then go for it. But otherwise, just serve. Thank you.
I want to thank all you guys for hanging out because I know it's been a long day. And really appreciate, it makes it a lot more lively to have actual people sitting here with us. And we will get the video out as soon as we can. All of you guys, what Umar said, I've said to you in emails. And the bottom line is that we have eight fine people residents here that are running for four seats. So four of you are going to be on our city council. Four of you are not. And the thing is, like he said, there are lots of other ways to serve. lots of other ways to serve and you all are making a difference just being here. So the election is March 5, 2024. Measure D and Measure E, I think you learned a lot about Measure E tonight. I think that was probably one of the highlights of tonight. And you've got tremendous, a tremendous slate of choices to choose from for city council. You heard from our mayoral candidates earlier today and we've got great choices there. I think Mountain House is going to be in good shape moving forward. And I'm not going to get on my soapbox. I'll stay right there.
And Brian, not to forget about your entire crew.
Yes, that was my next step. Thank you. My longtime good bud, Bob Corden is responsible for our sound tonight. I appreciate all the and he's also going to be producing the video. So it's going to take some doing to do that. And and our goal is to get that out in a week. Because while March 5 is election day, mail-in balloting begins February 6. So we want to get the information out to the entire community in plenty of time so people can see what their great choices are. And, you know, they might have a problem making a choice because, you know, there's, there's a lot to choose from. Now we're over time. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate all of you. Love Mountain House. Have a great night.
Invite him back tomorrow for the-
Oh, tomorrow is the-